Right away of the former exit two west of Dominion Drive and south of Crestview Drive, St. Croix Crossing LLC and VB Properties LLC. Then you want to just give us a little summary of where that property is and what it extends to?
The area being considered for discontinuance is the area sixty feet immediately south of Crestview Drive and immediately west of the west right-of-way line of Dominion Drive. It's part of an area that is dedicated for public street right-of-way when exit two plat was initially proposed and approved by the city back in the mid 1980s. This area basically has not been utilized once Crestview Drive was realigned, the intersection was finished so that there was a T-intersection of Dominion Drive and Crestview Drive and this particular right-of-way no longer was utilized for street right-of-way. There are public utilities in the right-of-way, public sanitary sewer and public water utility and that's I think referred to in the issue sheet as presented. Other than that, we should open it up to comments from the public.
Thank you, Denny. Do you have any questions, Denny, for verification? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this subject? Come up, identify yourself and we'll go from there.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Ryan Carey and I represent Dennis LeVold, who is a partner with Motels of Hudson, who as you know owns the Comfort Inn, which is immediately adjacent to this affected property. I have with me first and foremost approximately 100 signatures from people surrounding the area who were opposed to this vacation of exit two drive. I would ask that you review those. There are one original and some copies attached to those, but probably not enough for each councilmember. Again, as I stated, I'm here on behalf of my client Dennis LeVold and my client is in opposition to this proposal. One of the things that I want, I'd ask the council to think about is not to consider this vacation of exit two drive in and of itself because let's face it, we know there's more to the story, that story being that there is a conditional use permit out there and the intended use has been objected to by my client as well for reasons that I'll get into. I would ask the council to pay due respect to the opposition voiced by these adjacent business owners, landowners and residents. I think that you will all find that they wouldn't be making these objections unless they had legitimate concerns for the negative impact that this proposed vacation and subsequent use of the land will have on the property. With respect to the resolution itself, I have read the resolution as well as the proposed agreement that was attached to it and while I do applaud the council for recognizing one thing and that is that there is an important, well, it's very important to preserve the right to open exit two drive in the future, but I don't think preserving that right the way it's drafted in this document really will carry the day. What I believe that shows however, is that relieving the stress that there is currently on Carmichael Road is a very fundamental and important thing to the city of Hudson. Much more important and much, would be a much more, be a greater benefit to the city by relieving some of that stress and diverting it to reopen exit two drive than the benefit to vacating exit two drive today. I think it's very clear the benefit to the city is far greater than it would be if it were to vacate exit two drive. And I think that really begs the question, why bother vacating exit two drive at this point in time? Now, I recognize the proponents have attempted to alleviate this potential risk by putting some language in there, but I don't think it's enough. The first thing I want to point out is if you look at the resolution as drafted, it states that it uses the word reconvenance. Now reconvenance by its very definition would mean the proponents would be giving this property back to the city if it was necessary. Well, if you look at the agreement itself, that's actually not what would be happening. It would not be a reconvenance. In fact, it would be, as I understand, the, a right-of-way. It states that the city will be entitled to a right-of-way if the area proposed for discontinuance is in the future needed or required by the city or state. I think that's much different than a reconvenance as stated in the resolution. The next thing which I think is cause for concern is in paragraph three B of the agreement, which states that in the event that all are part of the area proposed for discontinuance is in the future needed or required, then it goes on. I think it's really important to play that out for a second. What is meant by needed or required? Who determines if the discontinued land is needed or required? Is that up to you to determine if it's needed or required? Is it up to the proponents? I think it's quite ambiguous as to what first of all needed or required means. I think if you get, by way of example, if for instance the city decided to reopen exit two after giving this property away and they came up with a plan to reopen exit two drive, which in the city's opinion was the best option, and then proponents come back and say, well, actually it's not needed or required because I've come up with an alternative option for reopening exit two drive. It does not require this discontinued property. I think that's a problem that the city doesn't want to have down the road. Also, what if the land is needed for something other than exit two or something ancillary to exit two? I don't believe the agreement covers issues with respect to land uses other than exit two drive. And for what benefit to the city? I think that there's potential that you'll be likely be headed for maybe some litigation or at the very least some additional time and expense. The bottom line is I think no matter how you draft these documents, the city would be giving something away. And I don't believe that utilizes the same kind of forward thinking that this council has at all times exercised when thinking about giving city-owned property away for nothing. I also think it's important to point out that this proposal could result in a future non-conforming use and I think again, this is demonstrated by way of example, if some of this vacated land is used in a development and thereafter it's determined by the city that it's going to reopen exit two drive and determines that, again, that some of this land needs to be taken back, a setback requirement could later on be not enough and that we could have what was once a conforming use now a non-conforming use and now you have this grandfathered in with little to no recourse. And I think that the vacated lot, if given away today, would no doubt be used for further expansion, which again could be, what could be a conforming use later on become a non-conforming use. I think there are also some practical considerations the council should require today. I think these are very important. First, land has a value. Why gift it? I think you owe it to the taxpayers to determine why and which you would just gift this to somebody versus a charging the fair market value. Also, I think it sets a precedent that, for future buyers, and that precedent being that rather than before you purchase a piece of property, you go through due diligence and determine whether or not the intended use is going to be within the overhaul comprehensive plan, you just go ahead and buy it and thereafter try to get the city council on board with the proposal. I think that's a bad precedent to set. I think prudent investors typically will and should, if they have any doubt, the intended use will be within the overhaul comprehensive plan, they will go before the city council and obtain those necessary conditional use permits if necessary before purchasing the property. So I do have with us today, there are several individuals from the Comfort Inn, if you wouldn't mind standing for a second, and there are also other people in the audience who I believe are in opposition to this. I'm not sure if anybody wants to be heard, but...
Mr. Carey, I'd just like to make one statement and that is, you said if the city decides to do it, it's not up to us. It is up to the state and the DOT to make that determination, not the city of Hudson.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out.
Is anybody else, did you want to speak?
Oh, I was just standing because I was part of the... Ryan. No, Ryan has covered the issue from Mr. LeVold's point to Mr. Anderson.
Why don't you take the, you've got a big audience, Mr. Sam.
You're not going to take two Carrys in a row like that. Sam Carey and I'm here not on behalf of Mr. LeVold, I'm here as an adjacent or a neighboring property owner. Carson Partners owns the office building across the street from where this development is proposed. The issues that I think need to be addressed are the issues that Ryan has raised, they're valid issues. My experience with this council and the way the city has been administered over the past 20 years or so has been very positive. It's been forward-looking, it's been comprehensive in its thinking, and the thought today that you might be giving away some property that later you may want to take back is so contrary to what my observations of the complexion of this council and the administration has been for the past 20 years. I was shocked to hear that you're seriously entertaining this resolution. So, Carson Partners opposes the, opposes the proposed resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this subject? Yes, sir. Whoop, we got...
Go ahead, you've got a tie, you take president.
That's why I didn't wear one tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've met the mayor before, but many of you I haven't. My name is Dave Magnuson. I practice law in Stillwater. I'm admitted in Wisconsin and that's why I'm here on behalf of St. Croix Development LLC. They are the adjoiningers and one of the parties requesting the discontinuance of this road. There are a few things I think that I agree with the Carrys on, one is that the city shouldn't be gifting land to anyone. There's certainly no argument about that. The fact is if the adjacent owners here actually own the property under the right-of-way of that easement, all of the property, the whole sixty feet was under the ownership of the prior owner and the easement for exit two drive dedicated over the top of their ownership. So really what the city is doing really is discontinuing the right-of-way only. That will have the result of returning the property temporarily for as long as the city would allow the use of it to the tax rolls. And so you have what is now property not generating any real estate tax, you'd have that to the benefit of the city, it would be generating tax. The, there's another aspect to it and that is the whole right-of-way there, it actually looks like a yard and I believe under the laws of Wisconsin, an adjacent owner could probably use that in any way that's consistent with the city's ownership. In other words, they couldn't put an encroachment on the top of there now, but they could use it in all other ways, so it's really not going to change much in the way of the appearance of that site. I think lastly, and there's absolutely no argument about this, and the agreement is very, very clear, if the city of Hudson or the state of Wisconsin wants that back as a right-of-way, it will be re-conveyed. If the city needs to interrupt that, to dig in there to repair their utilities that are under there, and incidentally that easement will be retained, the cost associated with that, if there's anything blacktop on top of that parcel, will be borne by the owners, so it won't create any additional expense whatsoever. And if the right-of-way, and here's the other thing about the exit, these folks would love to have that exit open because it would only benefit them and if it would take the reconvenance of this right-of-way to do that, they would do it. And moreover, all of this is set forth in an agreement. It isn't something you'll have to take our word for or our handshake on. There's an agreement to cover every aspect of the city's exposure. And anything else that the city attorney would like to add as well? Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to?
I'm Bob Pierce. I live on Dominion Drive in the Boulder Ridge Apartments, District Two, and we're one of the affected residents and several of our residents signed a petition opposing this vacation. And I'm not going to get into the kind of legalistic things that I heard before, that's beyond me. I'm looking at it just from a personal standpoint of what the immediate impact will be to us as residents and if we had to select something, I don't think this type of business would be the kind of business we'd select. Of course, we don't have that choice and I wondered if the council has explored other options for the use of the property. It seems like it came in looking for basically a change in zoning, a conditional use permit is what I would consider it to be, and then since it doesn't quite meet the requirements, well, let's vacate some property and it seems like a kind of a cascading effect here to make every effort to try to, as if it was predetermined that we're going to bring this business in. I don't know, that's probably not the case. It just kind of is an outside observer, it almost looks that way. And it's, as I said, not the kind of business that we would certainly think would blend in well with our facility. We have a lot of second, we have residents on second and third floor. The first floor of our building is parking, so they're looking out over at these facilities and we're concerned about the noise aspects, the appearance aspects, the traffic aspects and a lot of things and it doesn't really seem to fit in with the neighborhood. And then I'm looking at it from a long-range prospect, if our worst fears do come to pass and it does detract from the businesses that we now have, we've got three motels there in the area, there's a lot of expansion on the other end of town, what happens if business declines and these companies, they're all major companies, decide, we're going to close up shop, we're going to just leave the buildings? What kind of an effect on the neighborhood might this have five, 10, 15 down, years down the line if the proposed owners misuse the property or do not have an attractive, or if they sell to some future users which now have the conditional use permit and can put in something that might be equally undesirable? These are concerns that we have. I recognize that we don't have all the information that you folks have and you have, you know, we have our confidence that you'll make the right decision, but we want to try to add our input to that to see that you take our concern into account and we hope quite frankly that this is not vacated. And I certainly, I guess would reiterate the idea of giving it away, but I don't quite understand what's happening in that regard, so I won't talk anymore about that. And I thank you for your attention.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Pierce.
Hi, I'm Dave Fies. I'm the area manager for the Comfort Inn and we've got legal representation, you guys have heard that, the planning commission has heard our fight regarding this issue. Let's not split hairs, the bottom line is we've been fighting a legal battle to try to stop what we feel is not a good fit for our neighborhood. And in that process, I think we brought up some valid concerns and that's kind of stymied things and now we're here today because, simply put, and again, I don't know the legal ease of all of this, but basically if you guys approve this, that gives a green light for this landowner, developer, what have you, to go ahead with his project, which throws out all of the legal arguments that we've had to come up with. We had to come up with legal arguments because nobody would listen to our, I guess, our side of things. We don't think this is a good fit. We have nearly 100 signatures, not just ours, but our neighbors, that's saying, hey, this is not a good fit, please think about this. It wasn't too long ago that downtown hotel, and we weren't opposed to that, but they came in and they wanted to develop this Radisson condo hotel type of situation and they were talking about a sliver of land that's much smaller than what's on the table today that we're disagreeing about. And basically the city said, and again, I echo what everybody else has said, we don't want to make a mistake that we're going to regret 150 years from now. That being said, I can tell you if this is approved, and I know there's a process, it goes back to the planning commission and then back to you guys, and at that point, if this is approved, it's a speedy process and we have no other cause. We've had to fight this legal battle at great expense. We're just, we're not a huge company. We're a little hotel company with two whole hotels. I'm the area manager, but my area is Hudson, you know, it's not very big and this is important to us. And I guess that's the heartfelt part of things. You heard Bob Pierce speak today just before me. We're not looking forward to listening to airhammers and things like that, that's just not a good fit for our neighborhood. And we're also very concerned about this old exit two. We wouldn't be here today if old exit two was still open. You know, the Perkins would still be open, the Hardee's, that's now Comprehensive Communications, would still probably be there, the Wendy's, that's now Valley Pools, would probably still be there, all these businesses would still be there and as Bob said, we can't just pick up that hotel and move it somewhere else that's more convenient. And you would probably say, well, you know, there's a dealership right there on the corner, they were there. You know, this, we have an opportunity to say, wait a minute. I don't know if I was involved way back when the exit was moved, I would have fought the good fight like we're trying to do right now, so. And echoing what you did with the small parcel of land, I'm not asking you to put a moratorium on this little piece or anything like that, but please use that same thought process for our part of Hudson. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else?
I'm not as vocal as these people before me, but I'll do my best. I'm Jenny Bell Zappa, as many of you know, and I'm born and raised here in town. And I've heard some things said that have come to my mind too, that this business, when it looked at the property, they evidently didn't plan very much ahead, thinking, well, we'll get these variances and that and that appears what they're after. And if you give them this, what next are they going to want? It's this kind of opening a Pandora's box as far as I'm concerned, just waiting for the next shoe year, as a camel putting his head just in the tent and want the whole tent, you know, that sort of thing. And you know, it seems that most of the business have been required to give some open green space for aesthetic value, for decorating that, and here they're coming and asking you to give them the green space that can be seen from 94. You know, when you drive into Hudson on either side across the St. Croix, it's a beautiful view. It reminds me very much of when you drive into Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I saw that 50 years ago and I never forgot that sight. And my husband and I traveled a lot and we talked to a lot of people that have been through Hudson and to a person, they mentioned how beautiful it is to come in there. We don't want to destroy that. On the north side of 94, it is destroyed, but we've got a chance to save the south side. And one of these men said that that's a lawn there and it is. Now, if they were asking for permission to put up trees or something to shade that from, so that it covered what they're going to do, and I don't know what a tire business does, but it bothers me when I say they want it for parking. You know, that covers a multitude of sins. Parking, what? You know, we've got this parking lot across from Boulder Ridge right now and it's a catch-all and they have a loud, they need a PA system. Every time we go in the garage, they're paging somebody or doing something and that's noisy. Do we need two things like that in this little, small area? I don't think so. And, you know, I do think that you should take into account what the taxpayers want, I mean, the home people want. And I think generally you do. I think Jack has been a real good mayor and I think, I'm proud of what you've done. And I just hope you see all the good reasons to deny this and go ahead and don't let them come in and take this land for nothing and use it for, as I say, God knows what eventually. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Move for closing the hearing.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's call a regular meeting to order and would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor, roll.
Here.
Next one more set?
Here.
Two O'Connell?
Here.
Three, Rattamacher?
Here.
Four, Wyland?
Here.
Five, O'Malley?
Here.
Six, Cook? Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Ladies first or somebody behind you, Mike?
Go ahead.
I'd like to address the council as well as residents. To, I'm Pat Shirley from the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau and like to invite you all to a candidate's forum, which the chamber will be sponsoring. That will be held on Monday, the 26th of March, at the FIP Center for the Arts in the River Room. The cost of that will be $12 for chamber members, 15 for non-members, but that will also include your lunch. So we're asking that if you're interested in attending that candidate's forum, that you RSVP to the chamber office by this Thursday, the 22nd, and that number is 386-8411. This weekend, we have the Spring Fest, which is the Tourism Bureau's event that we hold every year called Spring Showcase. It highlights the best of what Hudson has to offer and the businesses. It is Sunday, March 25th, from 11 until 5 and is open for, free to the public. This year's theme though is called Teaching a Kid to Fish. Now, if you know, Wisconsin and Minnesota are both feeling kind of the downdraft of the kids not being able to learn how to fish. No one's taking that role for us, those of us who live on the river. It's something we want to keep pumping for our residents in our area. So we're really excited this year that we're going to be able to talk a little bit about fish. The Wisconsin DOT's or DNR is going to be there. Also, we will be having entertainment, which will provide family fun and entertainment interaction on teaching kids how to cast, how to play fish. And so we're inviting everyone to come. We have over 85 booths of Hudson businesses that will be there and will, you can come, have lunch, you can purchase treats from area restaurants. Entertainment will be throughout the day from 11 to 5 and you can buy a duck for a buck and you can put your name in a hat and you can, we're giving away hourly prizes. We have lots of children's fishing equipment, the water safety for them and we'll be covering all those things throughout the day. So please come by and see us, our sponsors are UPS Store, Bernix, Coney Market and First National Bank of Hudson.
What was the hours again?
11 to 5 on this Sunday, the 25th.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a question? Anyone else like to address the council? Michael? Whoop, wait a minute. Mike, you're up next. Then we got another guy behind you.
Am I now?
Now.
Now! All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. The chamber is always a tough act to follow, by the way, just so you know. As you all know, there's an election coming up and my name is Mike Latch and I live at 1820 River Ridge Road in the first district and I'm a candidate for the first... at 1820 River Ridge Road in the first district, and I'm a candidate for the first district again. And I'd just like to give a little background on myself, if I might, for a minute.
Mike, I'm hearing from council.
Can't do that?
I don't think that's appropriate for the citizen comment section of the council.
Okay, Catherine. You know where I got it from, don't you? I got it from, I think I was on the council and some county people came in and...
Where that is informational for residents and, you know, at large, I just...
Okay, so this is inappropriate?
I've never seen it for a council election.
Me either, but I thought I would take a shot.
I feel uncomfortable with it, it's the best I can do right now.
All right, well, then I will make one appeal, and one appeal only. How's that? And it will be neutral. How about that? April 3rd, there's an election being held in the city, and I would like to let the citizens know that they should come out and vote. How about that?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Mike. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Line up, identify yourself, and...
Hello, council, everyone. I'm William Otfall with Sign Results LLC, and I am here on behalf of myself and approximately 25 businesses within the City of Hudson that I do business with. And I would like to ask the council to consider putting on the agenda for open discussion at the next city council meeting, the issue of temporary signage within the City of Hudson and related matters with that, on how it affects businesses in the city and everyone involved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Will I know if my request is considered, or...
Oh, yeah, we can put that on. It's okay with the council, we'll put it on for discussion, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
But we just do have an ordinance where those signs that were removed last week are against a, an existing sign ordinance.
That is understood. I believe there are a lot of issues at hand concerning that, issues of enforcement, the policies of how it's enforced, and I believe most of my customers really feel that temporary signage is important to them. It is important to their business, the success of their business.
Well, we won't, go ahead.
I, I believe that through discussion, there are possible ways to alleviate a lot of the tensions concerning and revolving around this.
Why don't you come back to the meeting when we have it on agenda, so we can discuss it thoroughly?
Sounds good.
Is that all right?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah. I will get it to council first. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the consent agenda items, and Madam Clerk will vocalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of March 5th, 2007, and special meeting minutes of March 14th, 2007. To approve the final development plans for a restaurant and retail facility at 901 Pearson Drive, as proposed by Banterra LLC, with the plans to be revised per the city engineer's recommendations.
Can I take that off?
Okay. To approve claim, claims for payment in the amount of $383,928.31. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office for inspection. To approve two regular operators licenses for the period March 20th, 2007, through June 30th, 2008. A list of applicants is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license to the St. Patrick's Home and School Association to sell beer and wine at the St. Patrick's Gala event, April 14th to April 15th, 2007, at St. Patrick's School, 403 St. Croix Street. To place on file the Public Utility Commission minutes of March 13th, 2007, and the Hudson Area Joint Library Board minutes of March 12th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion's carried, and let's go down to Plan Commission. Item number two, vacation discontinuance of part of dedicated right-of-way of former Exit Two Drive, west of Dominion Drive, and south of Crestview Drive, St. Croix Crossing, Crossing LLC and BB Properties. Resolution number 3-07. Denny?
Plan Commission recommends approval of the vacation discontinuance with the conditions that were cited in the agreement, and also the easement considerations that were provided to the common council. Be pleased to answer any particular questions that council members have.
Counsel? Denny, what is the benefit to the city to vacate, other than the 60 feet that goes back on the tax rules?
Well, right now, the City of Hudson, street right-of-way, my understanding, City of Hudson Public Works hasn't maintained the street, improved street area for some, you know, so that's, I mean, if we're going to continue the street, then we got to get our plows out there, plowing the street portion of it, which hasn't been done for a number of years. So we got street improvements in there, at least that provide access to two properties, and the city hasn't maintained that. Other than that, you know, there is a possibility that the property could be developed as, as part of that Lot 4 and 5, that could, you know, provide additional development on their parcels.
Denny, also, at the last month's Public Utility Meeting, they voted unanimously in support of not vacating that property for the sole purpose of being able to get at those particular utilities.
That was highlighted in my issue sheet. That issue was highlighted in my issue sheet.
I just want to...
Denny, what's the possibility, or what is the probability of Exit 1B, or whatever you want to call it at that point, and also a timetable if that would occur?
Well, it's not a, it's not an active issue that we've discussed. DOT and I discussed, you know, ways of potentially alleviating traffic pressure from Exit Two. I guess my thought, the probability of getting approval by the Wisconsin DOT for a new exit is probably less than 50% at this time. However, I certainly would not preclude or, or terminate that consideration. Certainly, the city ought to keep it open. Whereas, two, five, or seven years down the road, I'm not sure, but certainly that alternative ought to be kept open. In my opinion, the amount of right-of-way that be necessary, the 60 feet that's being proposed for vacation for that use is minimal.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Well, we had the first reading.
We did? It didn't note that. We normally note that.
I think we did the first time. Yep.
We did.
We did, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, does not say that.
Because we wanted to study that. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to deny vacation and discontinuance of this right-of-way.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
As the representative up there, I've had some of these citizens contact me about this, and I personally don't feel we need to do this either. I agree with them. I just don't think that, I see no reason why we need to do this, basically.
Any other comments?
I, too, have been, this is one of the issues that I've been contacted on more than any other issues thus far, so I'm opposed to it as well.
Thus far on the agenda, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Are you ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, unanimous. I want to go back to Plan Commission on the item that you took off, Cara.
Yeah, I forgot, where is that?
Final development plans for the 11,000-square-foot restaurant. Did you have something to add?
Well, I just thought, since we're approving an actual, another building in this spot, that, with the planning commission, we had some diagrams and pictures of the top building. I don't know if we, anyone from Banterra is here, or if you can just talk about what...
Matt, do you want to, you have your presentation boards?
Here it is.
Well, you just wanted to take it off to make it up.
Just so we could vote on it as an actual...
Matt, could you, could you put up your presentation boards for the...
The recommendation, the, or Plan Commission, excuse me, the recommendation is to approve the final development plans for a restaurant based on 196 seats, and retail facilities proposed by Banterra LLC, with the plans to be revised per the city engineer comments, where, which basically were relatively minor details in modifications to plans and specifications. The proposed building's 11,007, 7 square feet...
Want to put these over here, man?
...which the restaurant area is about 5,200 square feet, and the retail area is approximately 5,775 square feet. The general architecture would be consistent with the two buildings that are abutting Carmichael Drive between Pearson Drive and, or, excuse me, Stage Line Road. This building would be west of the Citizen State Bank Building, is currently under construction, and north of the building is occupied in part by Starbucks and Cold Stone Creamery. I think there's another one or two businesses in there, but I think that's good for orientation. Matt, do you want to make a couple of comments?
Sure. The feel of the building, the look of the building will match in with the first Banterra and Banterra Two, with the brick, the stucco Buffalo Wild Wings is slated to be on the corner. Is that full?
You're fine.
Yeah.
Keeps going.
And so we'd have approximately 5,500 square feet for Buffalo Wild Wings on the corner, and then speculative tenants at another 5,500 square feet further to the east. Just real quickly on the site plan, just for reference, we're looking at the Banterra One Starbucks building down here. The parking lot right now comes up about six or seven stalls. We'd continue that parking lot, and it would make a connection over to the Citizens Bank, Citizen State Bank parking lot here, a common access drive. This street is now in, back behind, and this is, in a sense, pad-ready. The retention pond is in, retaining walls are in up front here. Again, there wouldn't be any signage, other than the pylon signs that are existing out front, other than the signage on the building.
Questions? Anyone? Recommendation from planning is to approve. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you much. Let's go down to Finance Committee. Item number five, request for wage adjustment for new patrol officer Jeffrey Williams is the new chief here. Chief, you want to give the council and also the TV audience a little, again, executive summary?
Yes, sir. We were fortunate enough to hire Officer Jeffrey Willem's from the North Hudson Police Department, where he has five years' experience. He comes to us very well-trained, very well-recommended, and a known quantity to Hudson in St. Croix We are looking to get him moved as a lateral transfer, something that we're looking forward to doing more in the future. As I said, he was there, North Hudson, for five years. We'd like to move him in at the Hudson third-year level, salary-only. We have discussed it with the police union, and as long as it is just salary-related and not seniority, they're in full support of it.
Recommendation from Finance is to do just that. Need a motion?
So moved for approval. I'll second, but we do need to clarify one thing, that he, Officer Jeff Willem's, will not move in immediately at third-year level. Could you explain a little bit more about that, Chief?
Yes. With any new officer, experienced or otherwise, they have to go through a field training officer program, FTO program, typically lasts 60 to 90 days, and that salary would not take effect until the successful completion of that FTO program.
And I've asked the chief in the Finance Committee to work with council, to come up with the policies, so that we don't have to approve each addition to the fours, which I think is in order. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go back up to three, under Plan Commission, School District of Hudson, petition for annexation of 41.993 acres, southeast quadrant of Highway F and Cooley Trail. Ordinance number 5-07. What is your pleasure? Go ahead. The pleasure is Denny's going to talk.
Well, move for first reading, to allow us to continue with this.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Denny.
The Plan Commission recommends approval of the annexation. The, there is a development agreement, it's been prepared. There were a couple of issues that were discussed. One was the extension of utilities to the edge of the property. I've advised the school district, in my opinion, that the city will not waiver on that particular provision. I think that the city's staff has very carefully considered these items. We have accommodated some fiscal considerations in the school district as far as payment of core facility considerations. Also, I think one issue that would need to be resolved is where the city or schools can be bidding the sewer extension project if the annexation will move ahead, and that, if we're going to have first reading tonight, we can have that discussion before the next, next review.
Anything that the council wants answered during this time?
I have one, one question. Now, since we're right at the limit of our sewer capacity, what's the, what's the expectation as far as how that's going to affect our...
Well, this would have minimum impact. This is equal to about 18 residential units, very minimum impact. One issue, both from water, the water facility considerations are, you know, what's been presented to us from the school is consideration of low-water usage facility. We applaud that, but from a water facility standpoint, we don't design just on the water usage. We design on fire protection and capabilities of what their peak water usage is, and that's where the core facilities charge comes from. In regards to sanitary sewer, again, we've made some provisions regarding charging for the entire amount to be institutional use. We've charged the core facility based on 12 acres of institutional use and remaining parcel to be used as park. And again, that gives almost a 50% break on what would have been the core facility charge under an institutional use for the entire parcel.
Any other questions that you want answered between first reading and approval?
Can we also have a public hearing on that?
Public hearing?
Well, look what we went through tonight for this annexation, or for this discontinuance. I believe we might have the same response for this.
Why aren't you here, why aren't you here tonight if there's such an opposition out there?
I know, I have received emails on both sides of it, so I don't think it would be a bad idea.
I think we should have a public hearing. Prior to the second reading.
Yeah, just like we did with this first session.
Would you entertain a motion for a public hearing at this time?
How about just letting people speak at the council meeting?
Okay.
I mean, that's typically what happens.
A published public hearing.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's an option that...
I don't think it hurts to have a, hurts to have a public hearing prior to the meeting, just like we did tonight.
It gets published, then, and people see it as a separate issue. Do we make a motion on that, or do we...
Well, it's...
What happens?
Yeah, I don't...
Do we vote on the first one, and then ask for a hearing, or hearing first and then vote?
Well, the motion on the floor is first reading, so we should complete that and then discuss whether we want to have a public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
No.
Now, you want a hearing...
Does it have to be a motion, or is this just a recommendation?
No, let's have a, a motion with the recommendation for a hearing.
Okay. So moved.
And we have to advertise for what, two weeks?
Well, you want to set it at the same time as the next council meeting?
Correct.
So, so get it twice in the paper before then.
I'll second it, so that's official.
Okay?
Now, we can talk about it.
Now, we can talk about it.
About the hearing?
Nothing to say, just the date that you're going to schedule it. We need two weeks of publication.
Next meeting, which is, we're having a special meeting, are we, the 9th?
We haven't voted on that.
No, I understand that.
Well, let me ref, you're not required, there's no required notice, because it's a totally discretionary hearing.
But if we are to have two weeks of publication, we're not talking April 9th, then, are we?
No.
It's too late for this week's paper.
That's correct.
Oh, it is.
So you're talking the meeting of the 16th.
Randy's gone. Randy's gone, he got the news he wanted.
Oh, he's right there.
Is he, there he is. Randy!
Can we get it in this week's paper?
I thought I seen a problem.
Okay, so then it'll be the next council meeting.
Yes, council meeting.
The fourth.
For the next council meeting, you want it?
April fourth, right?
Well, the special meeting and the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, it's April fourth.
Regular meeting is April fourth.
Fourth, yeah. What do you want?
Yeah, April fourth.
Okay. Is that right with the secondor?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Any comments on that?
Sure. Bob, we always like to hear from you.
Great. Now?
Now? Come up, identify yourself.
I'm Bob McClinsky, thirteen oh-one Freyer Street in Hudson. On Friday, I did ask the city clerk for copies of any documents that were relevant to this issue of annexation, and she was very nice to provide me with this stack of documents. I read through them this weekend and I do have a few comments I'd like to make about them. The first is a document I found entitled Review of Wastewater Treatment Plant Capacity Demand that Dennis created a year ago, tomorrow, March two thousand and six. In there, Dennis had included a picture of the city with these crosshatch areas which are contiguous to the city and are not part of the city, but are possible annexation requests in the future. He concluded that should those areas be annexed, that would be a, up to three hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me, three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day of wastewater treatment requested.
Why don't you identify those for us so that we know what you're talking about?
Well, you mean what's on the, on there?
Yeah.
Well, okay, let's see. He says, "North of I-94, all areas between I-94 and Vine Street, up to a quarter-mile east of Carmichael Road, south of I-94, I-94 to Old Highway, thirty-five to Tower Road, County Trunk Highway F to Mayor Road to River Ridge Road. Total area approximately three hundred and forty-two acres."
Thank you.
And then he also says in there that what's available for that crosshatch area is sixty-two thousand gallons per day. So, you've got sixty-two thousand gallons per day capacity and you've got up to three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of possible request in the future. In my mind, when you're that far short, you've got about twenty percent of what could be asked for, you have got a scarce resource and you've got a valuable commodity. And that being the case, I feel you have a duty to use this scarce resource in a way that's most advantageous to the taxpayers of Hudson. Because the school district is tax-exempt and provides no tax income to the city, a decision to provide the district thirteen percent of the available capacity seems to fall short of your fiduciary duty to the taxpayers. Residential, commercial, industrial development would be more advantageous to the city as those uses would provide tax income. My second comment, I was looking at Chapter Nine of the Hudson Municipal Code, which deals with annexations. Section nine dash five states as follows, "The appropriate city staff shall cause a budget study to be made showing not only the estimated annual costs of providing municipal services to the territory proposed to be annexed, but also the estimated revenues to the city from the territory." As I went through the documents, I was surprised to find that no budget study had been included. That tells me that the Plan Commission approved the request for annexation without a budget study being completed, which violates ordinance nine dash five. Since the school district will be providing no tax revenues to the city, any budget study will necessarily show a negative impact on your budget. I would expect that the city council will require a budget study to be completed in compliance with section nine dash five. As a citizen, I know I want to see the details of that budget study. I would like to see the dollars and cents in that study. Third, we've just established that there are two negative impacts to the city with respect to this request. First, you're using scarce wastewater treatment capacity on a non-taxable entity, and second, there's a negative impact on the city budget. For a true cost-benefit analysis, I would expect to find mention in these documents of some corresponding benefit to the city, which outweighs the costs and provides a legitimate, excuse me, legitimate financial basis for approval of this request. Again, I read through these documents, I found absolutely no mention of any benefit to the city. The Planning Commission mentioned no benefit to the city, the Community Development Director mentioned no benefit, and the school district mentioned no benefit. There was absolutely no benefit to the city. It mentioned it all. So you've got the negatives, I haven't found one single positive yet. Again, as a citizen and taxpayer of the city, I would expect that you, the city leadership, will make sure to identify what the benefit is to the city and make sure that it outweighs the cost prior to approving this request. And my last comment, the school district has been under the impression that annexation provides a financial benefit to them. Their architects told them that they will save six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars by connecting to city sewer and water instead of using a private well and septic system. This figure of six hundred and thirty-two thousand is based on an estimate of five hundred thousand dollars to connect to the city lines. I read through the annexation development agreement. It turns out that the actual cost to connect to the city lines is six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So that reduces the savings to the school district from the six hundred and thirty-two that they thought they would get to more like four hundred and sixty thousand. But the kicker of the deal is section G of the annexation agreement, and that states as follows, "The owner shall be responsible for the extension of trunk sanitary sewer and trunk water mains within the property," or adjacent right-of-way, "to the south and to the east property lines upon the demands for extension to provide services to areas that may need service, excuse me, services in the future." How much would these future extensions cost the school district? Well, the extension of the trunk lines now for, to the elementary school property is going to cost the school district five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So I have to conclude that the school district, when they sign this annexation agreement, is going to be assuming liability for a potential five hundred thousand dollar extension to go to the east and a potential five hundred thousand dollar extension to go to the south at some point in the future. By including this obligation in the annexation agreement, the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars savings of the school district has evaporated. In some, this is what I would call a lose-lose situation. The city is possibly going to accept a negative financial impact to annex this land and has not identified a single corresponding financial benefit to the city. The school district is taking on obligations that will very possibly cost it more in the long run than using a private well and septic system. And in a lose-lose situation like this, the people who are the losers are the taxpayers, like me, whose taxes fund both the city and the school district. I hope that the leadership of these two bodies take this into consideration when they utilize, when they determine how to utilize my tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert.
See why we need a public hearing?
Well, we have a school board just here, would they care to comment at all?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Mary Bowen Eggbroton, Superintendent of the Hudson Schools. We appreciate this opportunity to speak before you and ask for support of the annexation petition. I remember back last year when I came before you to talk about the need for this elementary school, so it's so nice to be in this position that we can be moving forward towards opening that school in two thousand and eight and serving the students in the city of Hudson as well. Along with me this evening, representing the district, are Dick Minnick, our Vice President of the Board and Facilities and Grounds, co-chairperson, excuse me, Dick, and Mark Belkey, who is the site planner from Hoffman, and Angela Popenhagen from Stevens Engineering. And we won't have all four of us speak to you, but certainly two of us will, because we know you have a lot of other things on your agenda. Our Board of Education certainly appreciates all the work that has been done to get to this point. And really thanks Denny Darnold for his work and leadership, the other city staff members, Jack, and the Plan Commission for moving this forward in a very timely way and being very responsive to the district and working forward in a spirit of cooperation. And we, our board recognized the city at our last board meeting and the spirit of cooperation. The school will include students who live in the city of Hudson, particularly south of I-94. So city families will enjoy and use that site, and they'll use it not only as a school site, but we hope for recreation, sports, and community events. And our hope is that this becomes, this site and this school becomes an asset to the city. We have looked at the site and the design of the school with four main goals, four primary goals. Of course, our first goal and the highest goal is creating a safe and effective learning environment for our students. That's what our community supported in the referendum. So that's our highest priority, but we have three other priorities that are very important to us. We are creating the site and the school itself with a sustainable, environmentally-friendly design, and we are purposely reducing the water and the sewer and the electric usage on that site by the design. And that's very important to us, which I think will be important to you as you move forward in making a decision about the annexation. This lowers the use of utilities and certainly provides less operating cost for our owners, taxpayers, both in the school district and those we share in the city as well. Only a portion of the site is going to be developed. We're concerned about the, we have been concerned about the footprint of the school and of the surrounding use, what we are actually developing, how much will be green space and how much will be used for parking as well as the school site. So we've tried to lessen that impact on the environment. Thirdly, we want to be a good neighbor and partner with those who are around the site, the city, the town of Troy, obviously, and Camp St. Croix, and the residents who live next to the site or will live next to the site in the future. So we think of the site provides an opportunity, a transition from the city to a more rural setting in the town of Troy, and we want to make sure that the site reflects that as well. So we've considered that in our site plan. And fourthly, this school and site should be a community center, and as we've designed it, that's what we've had in mind. We thought of the site to include ballfields, natural park-like areas, and there will be a trail all the way around the forty acres of the site, and we hope to be able to connect with future trails that come close to the site or up to the site in the future. So we're hoping that we can bring people from the community, particularly the south of the city, to use this site, not only just for school purposes, but for recreational use as well. As we look at the school, we're developing it for community use too. So the core facilities of the school are right as you walk in the front door. So the gym will be very accessible, the cafeteria will be accessible, the library, the computer lab, and we're making those all available so they can be open to our public for future use. We have a community information session coming up on March twenty-seventh. You each received an invitation from the district. We hope you will come and learn more about the site plan as well as the school design and where we are progress to date, and we hope all of you in the audience would do that as well. So that's March twenty-seventh on Tuesday, seven o'clock in Lee Auditorium in Willow River. And we will bring, our architects, Hoffman, will be sharing information about where we are in that design process, and we'll also be talking about sustainability and what features we'll be using in the school. The Board of Education certainly appreciates your consideration of our petition. Bob talked about that he could not find what financial incentives there were for the city. I hope you will understand the asset that it provides for the city and for the city residents and for the students that will come for many, many years to that school. So if we added up how many children and families that school is going to serve, not only as a learning institution, but as a recreational place, a place for families to go and gather individuals to run and jog, we see this as a very big asset to the south side of the city. We also know that we will be paying core facility fees as part of this agreement, which add to the financial, help take care of some of the things that we talked about or Bob talked about, Denny talked about, the services that would be provided once the site is annexed. Appreciate your time and attention to this, and I know we'll have an opportunity to talk to you again, but Angela Popenhagen would like to share some more specific things, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those too.
I'll keep this brief. I just had two things. Mary talked about the core facility fees, and those are fees that are used that are basically will be paid to the city to help with any wastewater treatment operation and upgrades. And then also as far as a huge impact or a positive impact that this is going to be is, this will be on the south side of ninety-four. You have a lot of traffic that goes through Carmichael Crestview or Long Crestview and all those areas, and, you know, this school will service many residents on the south side from a school standpoint and from a Parks and Rec standpoint. So any reduction of travel, you know, usage going to the Prairies, any pre-rocks, this is going to definitely help with that congestion. As far as a septic and well, septic system, this isn't just your usual single-family residential septic system. Right now, the cost is little over a million dollars to provide a septic and well, plus being a large septic system, you're going to have yearly ongoing maintenance and monitoring of this. So the life, you have to look at the life cost of this, and we believe that we have looked at the benefits and the costs and chosen which is most beneficial to public as a whole.
Angela, for the council and also the TV audience, why don't you give us a little summary of the things that were decided with staff that would be paid for by the school district, i.e. turn lanes?
Right.
The whole litany of specifics?
As part of this project, the, if annexed into the city, the sanitary sewer will be extended down to the site and the water main will be looped around the site at the cost of the, the school district will pay that cost. Also, in the transportation impact study that was prepared by Shelley Johnson of Bonestrow, they said there is no traffic impacts as part of the school, however, from a safety concern, they suggested turn lanes, bypass lanes, and lanes out of the school. The two sites, there are two access points that are proposed, one on Cooley and one on County Road F. Both of them will have turn lanes and bypass lanes to accommodate the safety and future traffic of this area.
Questions of Angela or Mary at this time?
Yeah, I just, that, that traffic study, is it possible where, there isn't a stop sign now on that corner? Did they say we were going to need one there as far as the traffic going in and out of that school?
Well, there is a stop sign on Cooley.
Is it right there on that, on that corner?
On Cooley, but not now.
Going west.
The traffic coming off of Cooley Trail will stop.
Right.
The engineers are not suggesting that a stoplight or a stop sign be placed on F and Cooley because there's, will only be a need for it for about a half-hour period of time in the morning and a half-hour period of time in the afternoon, and that there are alternative ways of dealing with that issue if traffic becomes problematic. The amount of traffic that's being proposed or generated by the school is not heavily trafficked and also occurs in two very peak hour periods, one half-hour period in the morning, one half-hour period of time. The traffic engineer strongly suggests not stopping the traffic on F just to accommodate those two periods of time.
Okay, good.
But you're talking all ahead.
I had another question. Bob mentioned something about an additional million dollars that the school will have to pay for extending water and sewer to different directions. Can you talk to that?
Well, I, you know, I think a million dollars is, is a far stretch of an estimate. There's no estimates at this time. The position is, is that the chances are very slim that the city will be extending sewer and water past this site. That's to say never, but I think that the opportunities. Other considerations as far as snow removal, traffic, road maintenance and so forth. It costs the city about five thousand dollars per year for the area, a fairly minimal cost overall. I mean, we average about twelve thousand dollars per mile for snow removal, maintenance of roads and so forth on a budgetary consideration. The road snow's going to be the main budgetary consideration for this annexation. The general administration is probably negligible. I talked to Devin Moeller, city administrator, about that. I mean, the police department may be the most affected due to a liaison officer or something like that, but the number of calls, issues that we have with school districts require a minimal amount of administrative time from the city's perspective.
Denny, I don't have it in front of me, but what is, what is the total cost that the school will be? that the school will be paying the city for all the things we talked about just a few minutes ago? Do you have that estimate? Or maybe Angela has it. I don't have it in front of me. Like any other developer, the school district will be paying for all of the amenities that are necessary for that particular school area. Just trying to get things in perspective here.
Right now, they'll have to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars for core facilities for the sanitary sewer, eighty-six thousand plus for water core facilities, forty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for sewer connection fee based on a student population of five hundred and eighty-eight students. We will require them provide lawyers of credit for the construction of the streets. Modifications currently, the estimate's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. School is not, is going to pay for that, not the city of Hudson. Sanitary sewer extension, Mayor Roltz's site is estimated to be about two hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Water, water main extensions to amount of about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars will be required of the school district. Also, building permit will be required depending on the estimated cost of the project, which the building permit is based on. That will be determined at time, building permit. Also, they'll be required to have erosion control deposit of approximately two thousand five hundred dollars.
So what, do you have any idea what that total is?
Six hundred and ten thousand plus the building permit you take.
I was hoping somebody was adding this.
My comments from the school district from the very beginning of any of these negotiations that the school district is going to pay their fair share of the cost. They are developers, they're public developers. But my position was that the city of Hudson would not bear the cost of this, of utilities, street improvements, other improvements to serve that particular site. So just like any other development, the cost will be borne by the school district or the developer, not by the city of Hudson.
One other question. He mentioned something about this, this number, the thirteen percent of available capacity, which would be about eight thousand seven hundred gallons a day. Is that in the, is that right? Or is, I mean, do we know about?
Well, that's approximate. Again, that's, in my opinion, that's a very minor. I mean, if somebody came in and said, "We want to build eighteen homes," that's a very minor demand of.
I just don't know what the, you know, what capacities are. So eighteen homes is about eighty-seven hundred?
Well, you're looking at about eight thousand, eight, we're calculating on a per residence equivalent unit, about eight thousand eight hundred gallons per day. The school district, we did do some research on what EP Rock is using, depending on who's doing the calculations. But our people calculated EP Rock's using somewhere around six thousand two hundred. Now, again, can those numbers fluctuate a little bit? Thing is, is that the school district will be utilizing wastewater treatment facilities primarily during the non-peak hours, after the morning showers and restrooms, and before the evening showers and restrooms. So they're fitting in between the peak hour periods. That's an important issue as far as wastewater treatment capacity.
Also, being a green building, this is probably going to take a lot less than what EP Rock does. Is that?
That is the hope, yes.
And remember, the council has taken a position on residential annexations. Will not be accepted, at least by the present council that we have here today. And any commercial annexations that we're talking about will probably use less of our capacity than it does residential.
I do have one concern about the traffic and no stoplights with buses turning into what now is fifty-five to sixty-five mile an hour traffic. Well, we have an idea of as far as who will be controlling the speed limits in that area and,
Yep.
you know, a stoplight. I would like to have some type of, some type of agreement that that will be not paid for by the city in the future, so deemed necessary.
Well, you know, we can enter that into the development agreement. That's, I mean, our engineers are strongly suggesting we don't have it. As far as the speed limits, if it's under the county jurisdiction, the county can only, my understanding, the county can only lower the speed limits by ten miles an hour. So if it's forty-five, they can only lower it down to thirty-five miles an hour by state statute. At least that's been explained to me by St. Croix County Highway. Now, with city-town jurisdiction, I think that's a little more open to local jurisdiction considerations as far as lowering it on Cooley Trail.
So is where you're going, is that if improvements are needed here, it could be a roundabout or a stoplight or whatever, is then taken on as a future expense of the school? Is that what I'm hearing? Or that we're suggesting?
It should be, yes.
And we had talked about that in the initial discussions with the school board. And we, we can add that. We did have the turn lanes in there, but I think that's a good idea. If we had a roundabout or additional lights had to be added, I think we discussed that with Mr. Munich initially, and I'm sure we can add that to our agreement.
I just don't like the idea of if we don't have control over speed limits and they are, you have buses making left turn lanes and it's a very busy road, especially in the morning, that needs to be addressed, in my opinion.
Well, there will be bypass lanes on both Cooley Trail and so the cars can't go around the buses that are waiting to turn left.
Right.
What a good concern.
I was going to say, in one of our other safety committee meetings, we also talked about sidewalks and going up to that would service the school. Has that come up in any of the planning discussions?
Sidewalk to nowhere.
No, it, it.
Or you mean in, in the, up, up Carmichael?
Let me address that, because I think there is an answer that lies ahead for the city. And that is on the west, or excuse me, east side of Carmichael Road. There is underpass where cars can go from the north side of Carmichael Road to the south side with an existing sidewalk. If the St. Croix Metals Dog Track is potentially redeveloped, there is a very strong and positive possibility of constructing a pathway system on the east side of Carmichael Road where the students would not have to cross. If you go down to Cooley Trail, there's a culvert underneath that. It could be the possibility of developing a pedestrian culvert under Cooley Trail so that kids really don't have to cross Cooley Trail or Carmichael Road either to get to that school site. And it could be incorporation of a bike path versus just a pedestrian path. I mean, if that's, and I, Shelley Johnson from Bonestro and I are out looking at that alternative versus an alternative of running a pathway down the west side of Carmichael Road and then crossing Carmichael Road in the future. What I just proposed, I think, is the best alternative for the city and the school district if we need to improve pedestrian bike paths in that area in the future.
Can we add that to the development agreement? That we have, we have this future plan to make this happen? Because it's, it's come up on just people who want to do biking or walking, they have no.
Well, you could do it that way, Lee, or you could wait until the need is there. The safety committee could recommend that we put sidewalks in there and we, and we assess them accordingly.
We actually did make a recommendation over to planning to review a request from a citizen who wanted to tie up the pathways from the city and, and then to join them up with the county pathways. So we did pass something over there and said it should be considered in conjunction with the school development.
That's correct.
That issue was considered by the fire commission. Fire commission recommended approval of doing these shoulder improvements.
Okay.
Because we don't have funding in two thousand and seven. We're going to propose in addition.
You can put that in there.
Budget to make those improvements.
Okay.
I would like to make one comment in relationship to one of your questions, and that was about the traffic on F and Cooley, speed and so forth. And the turning lanes, we are following through with the recommendations based on the study that took place. But we've also thought about that in relationship to the design of the site. We certainly know the traffic on F and Cooley can become quite extensive at times. But, and as Denny talked about, we're really off the peak hours of that. But we're still considering that in our site design. So Hoffman has, was challenged to really try to get as many cars off the highway coming into the property without stopping them or making them turn one way or the other. So we're coming in both on Cooley Trail and off of F. So we have two access to the site. We also have a long driveway that offers multiple opportunities. So trying to reduce any kind of stack up on Cooley Trail or County F. So we've been trying to be very diligent in thinking about ramifications for the future, ramifications into the site, on the site, and how to be very good neighbors and partners with our community.
Any other questions or comments? I'm sure you can save a few for the hearing, which will be April fourth, right? Thank you very much. We voted on that. Did we vote on that?
No, I don't think we did.
I don't think we did because we had a lot of discussion there. Let's do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion's carried. Let's go down to Public Safety Committee. First one is a request for monthly Locust Street Classic Car Shows, May to September. Paul?
Yes, sir. This is Locust Street Car Show. It's, I think this is the third or fourth year. This event happens once a month. It's been a very, very good traction for downtown businesses and kind of exciting if you enjoy classic cars. The vote, or the recommendation for, from Public Safety is to approve the car show, and I will move as such.
I will second. This is the third year. This will be the third year.
It's been very successful.
Very successful.
Lot of interest, lot of people. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion's carried. Number two, approval for annual Hudson Booster Days Parade and Event in Lakefront Park, June twenty-ninth to July first, two thousand and seven.
Can I ask a question regarding this item? There will be no need for a large assembly application?
I think they were instructed the last time to take the application down to the committees, to all the committees.
Where is it? I mean, it's supposed to be here.
Well, were they?
Let's hold it over.
Yeah, let's just strike it from tonight.
They know that they had to go to the other ones, so they had to go to other committees.
They were instructed to do that, and I don't know what happened. It fell between the chairs. Let's go to three. Request of Crude and Whisk, Gwen Gerke, to use special short-term parking meter bags at four twenty-two, Second Street.
Gwen is here this evening. At least I thought I saw her. Yeah, there she is. Maybe she wants to address the council.
Why don't you give us a little summary and?
Sure. She's requesting, or Crude and Whisk is requesting to have some more flexibility in the meter and parking outside of their location there. And it was a mixed result from the Public Safety Committee, but we recommend that we try something a little bit different here as a kind of a pilot program. See if we could put red meter bags over a couple of meters between a certain period of time, here between four and eight P.M., to see if that would help out her business.
Well, the nature of her business is very similar to what we did at the drugstore on Locust and Second where you're picking up prescriptions, also short-term, yeah.
The Pearl Dragon.
Pearl Dragon, also the cleaners, and now we're adding this.
This, this would be something where she, or the company, be responsible for placing the bags over the meters no, no sooner than three P.M. during the day and then take them off by eight o'clock at night. So, and this, what it does allows, again, more flexibility for people to come in, go inside, pick up their meals, and leave.
Did I get a second?
There wasn't a motion yet.
Did I get a second?
Oh, excuse me, you didn't, no.
We didn't.
No, there's no motion.
Looking for.
I will move for approval.
I thought her, that you said you did, but.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. There's a second? No.
I'll second it because we have, we do have other parking spots in the city this way. This is just a different way of dealing with it.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, I stated my opposition at Public Safety. I just think to keep it simple and keep it consistent with the rest of the parking habits we've had and it's ten-minute parkings, that's where I would like to see it go. That's why I stated my opposition, in keeping it as simple as possible.
And one of the advantages to this solution is that these parking places are not taken out of circulation twenty-four seven. They're taken out of circulation for a very short period of time for a particular business. And there's also ramification that if they abuse the system and don't remove the bags, they lose the right to use them.
Who's going to monitor that?
The police department and the meter monitors.
Well, he's, he's not working at eight o'clock at night.
Well, if he comes out the next morning and they're still there, they've violated the parking.
I, I, I agree a hundred percent with Randy. Don't faint.
First.
I did. No, this is vastly different from the ten-minute parking that we have at the other locations. We're giving ownership of public streetway to one business for five hours a day. If you go three, the paperwork says four. But if you go three to eight, we're giving ownership to one business of our public thoroughfare, which has nothing, nothing to do with the ten-minute parking at the other locations where we just want people, it stays in the public domain, just move on through. That's all we're saying. I think this is completely different.
I have to disagree with you. The reason, because the, if we take the, if we, the other option is to put ten-minute signs on each of these places, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, ten-minute signs. They don't say Crude and Whisk, it's just for whatever business. Also, the concept between these temporary signs is that they do not say Crude and Whisk. They are, for this period of time, there are ten-minute parking for anybody who wishes to use them. That's why at Public Safety, we said the bags cannot say Crude and Whisk on them. They are ten-minute bags that are used by any business owner in the area.
Wait a minute. Where does it say ten-minute bags in this paperwork? It doesn't.
Well, then we have a problem.
We're not talking about ten-minute bags. We're talking about somebody going there and preparing a meal and having that parking spot for five hours.
It says two marked additional spaces at Williams Second Street as ten-minute parking.
That's not what this paperwork I have says here.
Should I circle it for you? It's on the backside, it says right there.
So what you're saying is ten-minute parking, the bags say ten-minute parking?
That is correct. And it doesn't take them out of.
So it continues to move them through?
Yes. It doesn't take them out of circulation permanently because they can only be used for a certain period of time. And it says ten minutes for whoever he wants to use them.
What's in that prescribed time?
Sure. Then I remove my objection. We're not giving ownership to Crude and Whisk.
Correct.
Maybe to alleviate the problem with what if they get left on after eight o'clock? What if they say ten-minute parking from four to eight? So what if, for example, they did get left on an hour later and then someone comes by and they want to park there? Then they realize, well, it's past eight.
Gwen is the one that's going to monitor that. And if she messes up more than once, there won't be any bags. Right? Chief, you got anything to say about that? You were on the committee. Everything seemed to be in order, and you're?
Yeah, I'm not concerned at all about monitoring it. And I don't believe for a second after going through all this that Crude and Whisk will ever forget those.
I think I said that, but in a different way. Are we ready for the question?
Does Gwen want to say something?
You know, I just want to say thank you for.
A little wee vote.
Yes, let's go. I just, I just want to say this is a real opportunity for the community, I think. Because what we offer to the community is a helpful way to get people around their dinner table. And I know, Scott, you mentioned five hours there. What we're seeing is that most of our customers are really interested in picking up dinner tonight. And they're not stopping in because there aren't any parking spaces available. And so with this opportunity to have it ten minutes for this amount of time during the dinnertime hour, people will be able to stop in, get dinner, get home, and bring their family around the dinner table a lot more often. And that's going to build the community.
I have two questions, if I.
Sure.
I'm not interrupting you. I thought I heard a period there.
Go ahead.
Are we talking three to eight or four to eight? Because the paperwork says four to eight.
Four to eight.
Okay. Meters are enforced until five o'clock. Who's going to pay for the hour? Because if it has a bag over it, you can't put any money in the meter. And that's lost revenue to the city in deference to one business downtown. I think the business needs to pay the parking meter.
But it doesn't say.
My understanding is that the bags are not going to be specific to my business, that all the businesses in that area will be open to using those?
So it's free parking starting at four o'clock?
Ten-minute parking. There are a number of other businesses in the community that have the same offering there. And I think that the solution was a good one to not take the parking meters out of commission for twenty-four hours a day. It really is the one hour from four to five that they will not be used.
Okay.
I don't see what you're saying, ten minutes.
It's on the backside, right down there.
That's her request, but out of Public Safety, it was not ten minutes, it was four to eight.
It wasn't.
Do you want to clear up the motion then?
It wasn't put on the.
The actual motion, it was discussed.
The notes that I have from the meeting, it was ten minutes on the bag. It was pick up only ten minutes.
Paul, why don't you clarify? Paul, why don't you clarify in your motion? We'll get an okay from the second, then we won't have to review it again.
I think I can clear this up. You're not talking two parking spaces. You're talking four parking spaces. Two parking spaces right in front of Cruit and Whisk, and two more in the Williams lot.
We, we did not approve that. What we approved was-
That's what I had requested, but the Public Safety Committee proposed.
See, the reason I'm not going by this is because this was your request to Public Safety. This is Public Safety's paperwork that I should be going by, which says nothing about 10 minutes, says nothing about four parking spaces. So, I think we don't know what we're talking about.
Oh, yes, we do. And we're going to clarify that by changing the motion, which you can all agree or disagree on. Paul, you're, you're, you're baby.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the short-term parking request on Second Street for 10-minute parking for a 60-day trial, trial period. Short-term parking to be effective between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. by the use of the bags, as we had discussed.
Is there a second?
This would be two meters.
Did you say two meters?
Two.
No, he didn't.
Two bags.
Two bags.
I'm asking that because he didn't.
Two meters.
With 10-minute parking.
Correct. They'll say, the bags will say 10-minute parking between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m.
Did I get a second?
Who seconded it?
You did.
You did.
Wow. Any?
I agree with him. Fine.
I think we should end this meeting now.
I, I guess we need to-
And it's just starting.
Yeah, I know. We're not up to what's going on.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. To the back page, Park Board, review bids and consider awarding contract for Lakefront Park Beach House Resiting Project. Bood Scott, the floor. James, are you going to handle this?
Sorry about that, Scott.
Well, it's between you or Paul, but I'm not going to do it.
Well, I suspect I'll stand up here and...
I'm sure the two of you can handle it.
Very well.
Presentation or later?
Well, this is for the, the resiting. You don't want to do that, do you?
That's correct.
Just give us the cost and the recommendation from Park Board.
All right. The Bathhouse Resiting, the Willow River Construction was low bid in the amount of $116,950. The funding was to come from the 200 and five, or 2005 park bonding approved for parks, and the recommendation is to award.
Everything in order, Betty? Chief Financial Officer?
Can I ask a question? Does, is there any additional cost for engineering, administration, and legal fees? Dennis, is this, is your, is B.R.A. doing this for us?
For the Bathhouse, we handled the redidding, but we're not going to be, uh...
Okay, so there, there will be no additional fees above the $116,950, coming from your company?
The total fees for this and the total package costs are estimated to be $125,000, including engineering and the...
Right. So, it's, it's, it's $125,000?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and we bonded 120?
We bonded 120, and we have, um, $25,000 was bonded for the grand unit nets. Those came in at $5,000, so we have $20,000 from that.
We do have the monies for the $125,000. Need, need a motion?
I'll move that we approve the $125,000 for, and award the contract for $116,950 to the bidder for Lakefront Park Beach House Resiting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments or clarification?
What is it going to be used for after beautifully resided?
Why don't you come up and identify yourself so we can all hear you?
I'm Sherry Rosenberg, 1416 Third Street. After this is resided, what is the function of the beach house going to be used for?
For the intended use.
Of, I mean, it's, doesn't do anything right now. What's, what's, is there something?
Could you clarify what it doesn't do?
Well, it, there's-
Then we'll clarify what it does.
Well, there's nothing inside it right now. Is it just a vacant building? I mean, what is it used for right now?
The reason for the additional siding, which is the non-combustible material, is that the way it's functioned today, people are taking, in the middle of the night, siding off there and burning it for fires, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right? With rocks, you can't do that.
Okay. But what was, I, I guess I'm, my concern is, I've lived here for eight years, and I've never seen the beach house used for anything. It's just a building. Was it not, initially when it was built, was it not built for a purpose?
Do you go down there in the summertime?
Uh-huh.
Do you see swimmers?
I see swimmers, but what's in the-
Do you see lifeguards?
Mm-hmm, but what's in the-
Do you see bathrooms?
Bathrooms. Are the bathrooms open?
Absolutely.
Did, there used to be, like, kitchen or vending or...
There is a kitchen there. Can't get anybody really to attend that or to even take it over as a small concession area.
Really?
Yep.
It's used during the boost, boost days.
Well, yeah, boost days. That's once a week. If you're interested, we'll sign you up.
I wouldn't, boy, I sure wish there was somebody in this community that would take that on because I think-
We're looking for somebody.
It would be an awesome asset to the community. Now that it's going to be resided, and it's going to look nice again, I...
I didn't mean to be harsh with you. If I did, I apologize. But quite frankly, it's a pretty active area in the summertime.
I, I know, and I just, I just wish it was more functional and more people went down there and there was more to do with it.
If you've got some ideas, we definitely will accept any idea you have.
Oh, please, somebody. And a grocery store, too.
And in case you're interested, talk to that guy in the back there who is the chairman of the Park Board.
Okay. Are you, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we or didn't we?
We have a motion and a second. We have no votes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I get off on these little tangents here. Review bids submitted for Lakefront Park River Water Sewer Project.
Well, this one has become substantially more interesting.
Than the other one?
Oh, yes, by all means. At the Park Board meeting on Thursday, we had checked with Precision Drilling and Installation, because if you take a look at the attached summary of the bids, you will see that they are almost $60,000 less than the second bid. And on Thursday, their indication was, yes, they were good with the, the price. They weren't going to get rich and famous, but they were, they were comfortable with their, with their bid price. Well, lo and behold, late morning today, after having the weekend to think about it, they decided that, no, they weren't comfortable with that number and would like to rescind their bid, which gets us to the bid number two of $130,745. And I guess Paul's got some numbers, I think. I don't have the...
So, we went from 71078 to 13745?
Correct.
Okay.
We had some discussion about, you know, does it make sense to rebid it? Rebidding it, if you look at the bids, we had three of them, three of the bids were clustered right in there, nominally 130,000, 132,000. The expectation is realistically, you know, that probably is, is the right number if you have three of them that close together. So, are you, if we rebid, are the prices going to be any better? Maybe. Are we going to incur some costs and some delays if we do rebid? Undoubtedly. So, we're to the point.
Can you help us on that?
Well, I'm just, I don't know that you can allow them to change their bid.
Well, that's the question I was going to have.
They're not changing it. They're just rescinding their bid. They're not going to change it. They're just saying-
They want out.
We want out.
Well, isn't this the subject of the public hearing?
True. But we did have on here to review the bids.
Well, I think we, I'd like to review it. I mean, I need a little more time to digest. There's problems in the bidding process, obviously. You're not going to be awarding the contract tonight, correct?
No, no.
Because you're looking, you're having a public hearing. So, I would just hold this until I have a chance to review it.
Okay, with everybody?
Right where I was, right where I was heading, so.
There, we'd like to point out that there is a greater gap now, though, between a septic tank, holding tank, and water, and sewer line, and that this should be discussed by the Park Board, which is the committee in charge.
We did, uh...
I, I saw your Park Board meeting, and you, at the lowest bid, there was only a 20, 19,800. And you just, you said that was so close. Well, now we're over double that.
Well, I met with Bonus Row, I guess it was this afternoon, and we spent some time discussing that. And it would appear that we have about a four-year, even at 40,000, it's about 10,000 a year for pumping costs, so it's about a four-year payback. At, at four years, you break even. After that, you're saving money. Wait for the hearing.
Well, I think we should, yeah.
I do have one additional question, and I spoke with Dennis Postler earlier today. For my own purposes, for the Fifth District, I would like to get from him, and he said he would have it available, an amount that includes his company's fees. Do you have that, Dennis? Chuck has it? The reason, let me explain. The reason I'm asking for actual dollar figures tonight on, on these two things, actually, there are three things that we have to get them on, is that I am sending out to every resident, every voter in my district, a letter this week with a picture of the really good-looking guy in the bottom, along with a survey, a quick survey, asking for their input, and I need to know the, the correct dollar amount. This is how much it's going to cost. Do you want it? Yes or no? And over 400 of those will be going out at my own expense, not at city expense, to everybody in my district.
Were you going to present something this evening, or you want to wait until?
No, it's, it's weird.
And you have the final figures?
Uh, the figures that we came up with were 164,000 with sewer and water, or 130,000 with the water and holding tank.
Do you want to give your... He's got a little review of the costs for this. Do you want to, you want to throw it out because we didn't have the other...
Cost for the two alternatives?
Correct.
Engineering estimates, are you talking about, or, I mean?
Total.
Total cost for the utility portion of the, of the project is 164,000 with, with, for sewer and water, and 130,000 for water and holding tank.
That's if you accepted, like, the next one, which was 140,000.
I wonder who you're basing this on? That's my question.
That's based on the 100 and...
Actually, I have different figures, Rick, that were just given to me by B.R.A.
The second low bid.
The second low bid?
Yeah, 130,745, to which they will add 38,922. Chuck, I'm reading that right, correct? And so, we're at 169,600 and some dollars.
For a holding tank?
No, that's for the sewer. We're not at this point discussing the holding tank. Because Jim just outlined that we would not have substantial savings with the holding tank.
Well...
Well, those are different than the not to exceed the, not to exceed costs that were given originally.
Well, I, I'm not as up on this as you are, because you're on the committee, but isn't the not to exceed an overall, a global amount that, that includes the other part of the project, which is the actual shelter building itself?
No.
I think part of what it was is it included, the number that Scott has is the total package included all the borings, all the work that-
I haven't gotten to that. That's another amount.
No, but that, I think, is the total amount.
Yeah, this is, these are the total amounts.
And that includes everything.
Yeah.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. Because none of us have, we all have a little different part of the elephant, okay? One's got the tail, one's got the leg, whatever. One's got the trunk. I'm saying, get your facts together. Let's come back.
That's, yeah.
All right?
This is definitely not ready for prime time.
No, this was a moving target, changing right up.
So, get them all aligned. We'll, we'll review them when you get the final, final.
Do you want to go through any of the other parts of it, or should we just put it all, you know, get it all together and get it right?
Well, I think you should do that because we're, if we, if you give your presentation, they're going to be different than what the figures that we heard tonight, right?
Well, based on the information that we just received, they are a little bit higher, as Scott alluded to, by, I don't know, five grand, but, um...
But she's also looking at whether or not we can even use the 130, which is the second bid, right?
I just have to look at it.
I, I think we should wait. I really do. What does the council say?
Yeah, let's, let's get it right.
Somebody make a motion.
I move that we come back to this at the earliest date that we have all of the facts and figures together.
I'll second that.
Not trying to cut you off, but I think that we're probably, uh...
Hey, we're throwing a curveball at 3:30 today, so what are you going to do?
Well, I understand.
So, we're talking then, just so I understand, we're talking the sewer, water, as well as the picnic shelter?
You know what I call this? We're Sainzados. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I'll explain that in a way. It's a three-M term. Does that go with number three as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to unfinished business. Consider increasing the number of liquor licenses that could be allowed in the city, ordinance number 3-07. The last time, did we have the first reading on that, or did we?
I think so.
I think we had the first reading. People were going to come back with suggestions as, as related to the prescribed ordinance, and we're there.
The number put forth by Athlin was 650.
Yes.
Each license for 650. And you're basing that, I'm just assuming, you didn't mention it in your memo, but I assume you're basing that 11,700 estimated population.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the most recent census.
Which we're just about to go over, I think, when we get the figures in August or October.
October. October, right.
Okay, which will open up another license. For that reason, instead of, we wouldn't be talking about two licenses, which we have been talking about.
Well, there's a couple, if you...
Couple of options there.
If you want to eliminate the or fraction thereof language, then you wouldn't get another license until you are increased by 650.
Yeah.
So, just getting slightly over the 11,700 wouldn't...
Excellent suggestion.
So, let me just look at the ordinance. We just, do you see on the second page of the ordinance, paragraph C, small a, one license per 650 population, we'd eliminate the or fraction thereof.
Or fraction thereof, yes.
And that's actually what the state has done now for the reason of licenses.
So, we won't have people waiting for that one baby to be born?
No.
Yeah, that's right.
Could I suggest?
So, you have some time to...
I would, I'd like to go back to the front page of the ordinance 307 to restate my wish to delete one word from the sixth whereas, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, that the council further finds that the need for new alcohol beverage licenses is strike primarily, because it, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a wiggle word. Let's just strike-
Well, can I respond to that?
It's for businesses locating.
First of all, the whereas's aren't part of the ordinance. Those are kind of the basis on which you're adopting the ordinance. That won't appear in the ordinance code. The primarily is really to provide flexibility for the council in a situation where, and it's, it's not going to be in the ordinance, but where it's not in newly developed areas, but it's a situation where it would be appropriate. You don't have to issue it, but it provides flexibility, which is what, if you look at, I'm looking at the first page, the actual factors that the council considers in siding on applications, the number already operating in the area, the proximity, potential future need. There isn't anything in the ordinance that specifically says it's only for, you know, newly developing areas. The idea behind that was your city's changing, you need flexibility.
The flexibility, right.
And primarily, in the whereas's is designed to do that. It won't even appear in the ordinance.
No, but it does, it is an instruction to future councils, correct?
Well, they're not bound by it. They're bound by the ordinance. But it's to give, it gives some idea of the intent behind the ordinance.
My, and my intent is to have only liquor licenses available in developing areas.
Okay, and that's if, I mean, I'm not objecting. I just want the whole council to understand what it is you're doing.
Developing areas can be downtown or anywhere.
Can be downtown, you know, south part of V3 Business District. That's developing.
So, if, I mean, if, if that's what the council wants, that's fine. I just want to make sure you understood.
Let me clarify. My illustration I used last time was that if you want to buy the sub shop down here in Second Street and get a liquor license for it, no. down here in Second Street and get a liquor license for it, no, because you're not developing anything. That was the illustration I used. And I think it's a good point. We should reserve these licenses for developing areas.
Don't look at me, look at the members of the council.
Well, we understand that.
Sign-siders to go.
Can I ask one question? So, ten years from now, when our, just throw this out here, fifteen years from now, our city is built out, I guess we can change the ordinance at that time, where there isn't any developing areas.
Yeah. I want to be helpful to anybody who comes in and thinks they can buy something downtown and get a liquor license just by buying an existing business and changing the nature. We have fourteen liquor licenses in a three-block area, for crying out loud.
I personally think we should keep the flexibility to license. There is, I mean, if we say only developing areas, we're preventing an opportunity for maybe a good business to come downtown that may need a liquor license, or want a liquor license, and I don't think we should box ourselves in, personally. But I wasn't here for the discussion last time. I don't know what was discussed, but I think we should keep flexibility in the ordinance. We still have, you know, we still have the option to say no.
Any other opinions?
Flexibility with deniability.
Yeah.
So does this have to go back to get refined, Catherine?
Well, no, because it's only in the whereas.
It's just that, well, we're eliminating the or fraction thereof, I think.
Right.
That's the proposal anyway.
And sticking with the six fifty.
I think we all agree on that.
Yep.
Possibility of adoption tonight.
Of adopt, yes. No? I mean, we can...
Yeah, it's second reading.
We had first reading before, didn't we?
This is the second reading.
Can we make enough changes tonight to do that?
Well, if it's, I mean, I think those small...
We already have a controversy between flexibility and redevelopment areas.
I have one question.
Okay.
Would you consider the redevelopment of the River Center a new developing business area or an existing area?
Of course it's a new development.
It's a new development, but is it a new developing business area?
Well, yes, it's a...
I just wanted to ask that, to make sure we're clear.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
We don't need to, we've already had first reading.
We already had first reading.
But I should.
Say yes.
Yeah. I'm looking, I'm expecting we will have a liquor license down there.
Do you want to have it in development and redevelopment areas?
Twenty years. I think maybe we ought to say you can reserve it for one week, no more than twelve months in advance.
Or current, oh, okay, or current year.
Well, we need to set, whatever the time limit is, right now, they can say, yeah, I want it for the next twenty or thirty years, on that week. And there's nothing in this to stop them.
I want to point out that if you look at the list of potentials for this banner, it's thirty-one. Each time we put that up and take it down, the cost is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars.
And that brings up another question. Why are we charging just a hundred and fifty? We're losing money.
No, we're charging twenty-five.
I just got the, a cost estimate, I got a cost estimate from Public Works.
We need to address that.
Where's the twenty-five?
Twenty-five is what it is.
Twenty-five is current.
Yeah, which doesn't come close to covering the city's cost.
Yeah.
What makes the difference between a hundred and, I mean, other than dollars, but between a hundred and fifty and three hundred, what causes that change?
Depends who you talk to.
Well, it takes probably a couple hours to put it up, and a couple hours to take it down.
And several people, because they have to be on both sides.
Here comes the official word.
Here's Mr. Gilbert.
And it has to be early.
Two people and the boom truck.
I would be happy to share with you what the difference is. Because some of the banners come...
Make me write.
Huh?
I'm happy to be fine.
Some of the banners come, they're not strong right. There's just a lot of additional work that needs to get done on them. Secondarily, we get wind, they get some twisted up, they get ripped, we're having to go out and maintain them. So, yes, your basic average, when everything goes right, a hundred and fifty dollars probably is a reasonable number. For many of them, it is woefully inadequate because of a multitude of reasons.
So it's seventy-five, put it up, seventy-five, take it down? Or is it one fifty to put it up and one fifty to take it down?
It's probably about one fifty a trip, so you're typically putting one up and taking one down. So yes, I guess seventy-five per cycle. But then again, you get the point where if you have to go out and maintain it, now you've just doubled the cost.
Well, you do want to cover your costs, you know, over, you've got to include those difficult banners to deal with in the cost.
And if you don't, it's a public service of some sort.
Well, I'd like to ask this question, two questions, really. You get the banners sometimes not in suitable condition for raising, and when they make the application, could we perhaps give them a one-page instruction manual? This, you know, it must come in, you know, this condition or strung this way, otherwise it doesn't go up.
They have that, and the thing is, by and large, most of the folks make an effort. And they don't deal with this stuff on a day-to-day basis. They think they're doing it right. I mean, they're convinced that what they've given you is exactly what you ask for. Well, no, it isn't, and you try and educate them. And the hope is that when they bring their banner in next year, it's better.
And you make the modifications accordingly, so you can put it up.
Right.
But you say that we need to sometimes maintain their banners. I assume that's, they rip in the wind or something, or what happens?
Oh, yes, some will rip, the clips will break, the ropes break, the ropes aren't as heavy as maybe they should be.
Well, how about it just comes down at that point, rather than us maintaining them?
Yeah, that's fine, too.
I mean, how's the rest of the council feel about that? We're giving them business of maintaining somebody's personal property.
At twenty-five dollars to do it, we're doing it as a public service anyway.
Absolutely, we are.
How does Chamber feel about the hundred and fifty deal?
Public service, that's a good thing to say. I think, just considering that, thank you, first of all, for considering it versus abolishing it, number one. I know the mayor was at a tourism council meeting that we had last week, down at the chamber office, and what came to light was, not everybody reads the Hudson Star Observer, not everybody gets the St. Paul Pioneer Press, and if we're going to get people to the events that bring tourism to Hudson, they have to have some other way to find out. And that banner has been huge for us. And, yeah, granted, twenty-five dollars isn't a lot of money to pay. I thought, I thought we paid fifty dollars last year, but maybe that was this year's proposal. Yeah, for two weeks, so, but the three hundred dollars that was being proposed...
My question was, what is your reaction to the one fifty?
One fifty is much better than three hundred, because, number one, it costs us a hundred and fifty bucks to have the banner done. And we have gone by the rules, and I think the chamber banners are pretty good. But I'm more worried about the nonprofits in Hudson, because that's what it's really meant for. And, number one, they're paying for a banner, number two, then they were going to pay up to three hundred dollars, and that was going to be prohibitive, probably, some of the profit that they make for the nonprofits. So as much as we'd like to support, we'd really like to see the banners go back up. But our goal here, and also for Hudson and you guys, is to bring tourism to Hudson. And this is a way we can reach tourists by attracting attention, and also remind the families of Hudson that there is an event that they can come to, and most of those events are free to come into, so that's our... But a hundred and fifty is much better than three hundred, thanks.
Is there a way to exempt nonprofit with a... Why don't we do that? Why don't we leave council, give us her summary? Because I think that's important for the audience here, and also our TV audience. And I'm talking about that little summary page that you gave us, that was on top of the table this evening.
Well, as we've discussed in my memo states, the difficult situation is that you're providing a forum for communication, you're regulating speech and deciding what can go up on that wire, and so there's constitutional issues involved. That's always, no black and whites, only gray. And you regulate as best you can, and there's always going to be the type of banner you didn't foresee, or that maybe you did foresee, but you can't do anything about, that may not be the community interest type of banner that the wire is for, but it still needs the parameters of policy. And so that's the, that's the basic situation you're in. You're able to regulate some, but it's got to be non-content. I've tried to do this in, saying it up for nonprofits that are Hudson-based, that have been in the city, what, twelve months, did I say? And, I mean, those are all parameters. You folks can, you may say twenty-four months, just to make sure it's really a community type, you know, has some support in the community. I just picked some numbers. You can do with them what you will, but you also have to understand that all those types of regulations also make it a lot more difficult to enforce or to apply. Public Works staff needs to then ask, okay, where are you located? Is it a P.O. box? Well, where are you really located? Is it in the city, or is it outside the city? How long have you been in operation? How many months? It's just, that makes it a little more difficult to apply, and you just have to understand that. Okay, my summary. We're trying to limit it, and you can limit it to local government entities and these nonprofits. I'm trying to, in the policy, tries to describe the type of events that the banner wire is designed to advertise. Parades, celebrations, plays, musical, athletic events, charitable events that are estimated to attract at least, I said, a hundred participants. That's no magic number, that's some, again, it's an effort to have some basis for saying this is a community event, something that the community is going to want to know about. So you don't end up just advertising any nonprofits fundraiser or whatever, regardless of whether it's really a community-type event. Again, the question is, how do you enforce or determine how many participants? You really have to go with the good faith of the applicants, and maybe after some point in time, there'll be a history. With the major festivals, there is a history. And so you just have to do the best you can. But there's no guarantee, I guess. And the effort was to try to tighten it up a little bit, still provide the wire, understanding that you can't predict everything, and you may get an application that is not what you want to see across your downtown main thoroughfare, but you're not in a position to prohibit. And then you'll get phone calls, and, you know, it's a, it is a problem. And your downtown, I mean, my concern is your downtown is very public, and you can't control, you just, there's only a certain amount of control you have. I think the policy, you know, if it works and if it provides a basis, but there's no guarantees.
Since this is not a resolution, we don't need to suspend the rules.
Yeah, no, you do suspend the rules, if you want to adopt it. I would say, I mean, I'm not recommending adoption right now. I think this is something, and it's totally up to you. You can suspend the rules if you want. You can look at it and think about it, and now the residents who are, have heard about it, have a little more idea what's involved, you may get some feedback. I do want to point out that actually, the mayor brought up, and I think it's worth considering, that the sign ordinance does, right now, provide for putting up banners and pennants on private property for, in conjunction with grand openings and community events. I have no idea, and Denny, maybe you can help out, whether this has been used or how it's been used, but it might be an alternative where the private sector is, can manage this without government getting involved.
We had a situation with the Chamber of Commerce in the last situation, which was, what celebration? The one that just...
Hot Air Fair.
Hot Air Fair. And actually, they could put a banner up on the sponsors' buildings, the people who are sponsoring. Let's say you have three sponsors for the Hot Air Fair. They can put banners up that are up, it can stay up for twenty-one days, they're eighty-square-foot banners, and they've got an outlet there, but it's not across Second Street. So in that instance, because we didn't have a banner policy, I said to Chamber, why don't you follow that policy that's already in our ordinance? And I think you did that, or are going to do that for the next one, correct? I think the sponsors for Hot Air Fair were Freedom, UPS? I don't know, but there were three major sponsors, anyway. So that does give you an out today, that you can use that particular sponsor building for banners.
So another option then is to not have a banner policy, because we're not going to have banners across Second Street.
Well, if there's a way that the private sector can handle this...
Or you can have both.
Yeah, you can have banners subject to the requirements of the ordinance, but the city would not be involved, except to determine whether the banner met the ordinance.
You know what, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion that we have a first reading tonight. Could I make a recommendation, though, that we change the fee to a hundred and fifty dollars?
Third second?
I second that.
One more point of discussion, if I may.
Sure.
Briefly. I'm a little concerned about the maximum of seven days, as even, as Pat Shirley alluded to. A lot of these events are advertised two weeks in advance, or the banner's up for two weeks. She said she said one of those up for two weeks, so a lot of events are that way. I don't know if we want to keep that tradition the same, or if we want to keep it at seven days.
Does this mean maximums are seven days unless you pay another hundred and fifty bucks, or does it say...
It doesn't say that either.
No, the idea, and I'm not, you know, this is totally up to you folks. The idea behind limiting it to seven days was just if you get in a bad situation, you can, you only have to live with it for seven days. But it's up to you folks.
Another question, or a point of clarification. What if they, speaking of sponsorships, if they put a symbol on that banner, like Burnet's? Or then you're talking with the PIPs Center, that's that building. I mean, where's the...
Well, the PIPs is, my understanding is nonprofit. I think if you start getting into allowing sponsors, you're advertising, and it's...
You address that.
It's a sponsor for the event.
You address that.
Right, well, no, yeah, I just want to point it for pleasure.
No commercial advertise, I would say it's much easier just to say no commercial advertising, because you open the door, yeah, right.
So that's already taken care of. Paul, it's a good point on maybe two weeks instead of one, and that relates to, again, the paragraph five time period. I would like to add, that we consider, when we have the second reading, not only maybe one or two weeks, but also, and reservation of that week or two-week period can be made no more than twelve months in advance.
I like that.
Also, Paul, you had made a suggestion, but you weren't here for that particular meeting, is that you wanted a restriction during the holiday.
Between November fifteenth and January fifteenth.
No banners.
She has that in mind.
No, I don't think so.
I read it, and maybe it was your other...
It was only in the minutes of the meeting, that's where we found it.
Yeah.
For the holiday season.
Because I didn't want it interfering with our Christmas decorations and that sort of thing.
November fifteenth through January fifteenth.
Yeah, to cover Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and Christmas.
Thanksgiving, and...
Yeah, because we put the decorations up at Thanksgiving.
I believe that's still after the Christmas tour homes and...
That would be the last event, probably.
If you've got any more suggestions, get to Catherine.
But look at what's already been, can be done in the private...
No, it's a point well taken, that people can do this on their own property anytime they want, as long as they conform to the existing ordinance.
Right, which would eliminate the need for the wire.
First reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Make those few changes.
Advertisement for April ninth, public forum, and scheduled date for possible council action on the proposed Riverwalk project.
Move for April ninth, public forum?
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to have the action that evening as well.
I think that's going to be up to Catherine, because she has to review the bids now.
Well, we'll have that before then.
Well, you want to...
It's only taking another day or two to finalize.
I mean, yeah, if you want a notice to be able to take action, I just need to look at the bidding process.
What if we had review bids and possible action?
Yeah, we can set it up for that.
All right, then we get a little more flexibility there.
Well, I'm going to renew my objection that I think it is not in the democratic spirit to have a very contentious, very contentious issue voted on by council members who may be leaving their seats, well, one's definitely leaving her seat one week later.
That's right.
I think that people will be voting for their candidates, based, at least in part, on how they stand. on how they stand on this picnic shelter issue. And those votes on April 3rd should be reflected in the council's vote at some time thereafter, not on April 9th before existing council members leave their seats.
Well, I believe that Kara, you know, has been with this project since the beginning, and she should have the right to vote on whether or not to proceed with it or not, number one. And number two, is I think the presentation I had tonight, and that we'll do it at a later date, whether it's the next council meeting, or the 9th, or both, will alleviate a lot of the concerns that the people, some people may have had. I don't think it is a divisive issue as you are portraying, but I think that if people have concerns about vandalism and security and cost, then I think that this presentation will alleviate those concerns.
But we're going to have in that possible action.
Yeah, you're not required.
However, Paul just brought up two points that I quickly, very quickly, like to comment on. It is not up to Kara or anybody running for office. And I'm running for office myself in the election. It is not up to us to decide whether we are here after Election Day to vote on this. It's up to our constituents, not us, not Kara, not me, not Randy. So I don't want to take that power away from the voters. Personally, I feel that to say, on the one hand, I want your vote, but on this issue, please shut up, is an undefensible position. Secondly, I feel what we've gone through tonight, again, proves the point I've been making for four months, since last November. This is just not fully, completely ready yet. We're not even ready now. We have to go back again and find out where do we stand with this. We don't even know the cost of this. Randy, you've been involved, you made many motions on this behalf. This is a picnic shelter. How many picnic tables are there going to be?
Can I answer that, Scott?
I know, nobody can.
There'll be eight or 10.
Nobody, nobody knows. Here we are, supposedly, right before a vote on a picnic shelter, and nobody knows how many picnic tables there are going to be. Is this not ready for prime time, or what?
It sure is. There's eight or 10 picnic tables that'll be in the shelter.
Nobody knows. I will reiterate that.
Well, this matter is eight, nine, or 10.
I asked a member of the park board, who sits right close to you in those meetings, and he didn't know. I asked city staff members, more than one, people connected intimately with parks, they didn't know. The answer is, nobody knows. And here we are, after four months of talking about a picnic shelter, and nobody knows how many picnic tables there are going to be.
Well, it's the first time you've asked the question, number one. Number two...
Oh, my God.
Nobody's asking you, nobody's asking anybody not to talk about the picnic shelter.
If you're going to build a picnic shelter, shouldn't you know how many families can go there for a picnic?
Yeah, eight or 10.
That's just a number you made up, Paul. Nobody knows, is the real answer.
I'm going to cut off the...
Yes, please. All I'm saying, Your Honor, is that we have over 50 public forums, public meetings on this issue, and people have had plenty of time to comment. Nobody's asking anybody to not express their opinion, or as you say, shut up. I think that's a bad term to use, but that's what you...
If we have the meeting on April 9th with the possible action, the council that will be sitting there that night will make the decision whether or not they want to accept it or postpone it.
Well, that's exactly my point. I think we should wait, we should agree to wait till after the new council has conceded.
Well, I think you're blowing, you're blowing this whole, you've blown this whole thing out of proportion anyway, but this presentation will alleviate a lot of the concerns that people have had. For instance, Mike, at the last meeting, said that this project is going to cost $600,000 to $700,000 of taxpayer money, which is absolutely not true.
You know what? Nobody knows how much this project is going to cost.
Yes, we do.
No, you don't, because we don't have any acceptable bids.
It's not going to run more, it's not going to cost more than $220,000, even in the last case scenario, adding on your...
Excuse me. We've got 150 to count on from donations and DNR grant, okay?
That's taxpayer money.
No, 150 to count on from Rotary and DNR grant.
That's taxpayer money?
No, the taxpayer money, the figures we have so far on the bids, which we can't even talk about tonight, because we don't know if they're legal or not, is over $400,000, which means when you subtract 150, you're at least around 250, 250-plus in taxpayer money.
No, that's not true.
My God, it's simple math, Paul.
Exactly, it is simple math.
$400,000 plus is the amount, when you add this up, take away 150, you've got 250-plus.
His calculator doesn't work very well.
Let's stop talking about this. I'm about to throw up.
I'm trying to stop both of you from talking, okay?
Can I make a comment, since my name is somehow brought into this?
Of course.
Since I haven't been the thing. First of all, I think that, Scott, you're making assumptions that people are going to be voting for their older person on this issue alone. And the people that I've, that is a major issue in their decision on how to vote. And I have talked to a number of people after the last meeting. I went out, talked to people that I don't know and haven't gotten their input on, and some are in favor, some are opposed. But I didn't talk to anybody that said, this is my main issue. This is how I'm going to decide for the next election. That's my personal experience. Perhaps you've had different experiences. I'm just saying that that's what I've experienced. And secondly, I am upset that you're, somehow it's being, there's allegations that democracy is being distorted or whatever. We don't need a public forum for this issue. We could have accepted the bids, and the project could have moved ahead, but we've decided to hold a public hearing, which is not required, and to give people the opportunity to speak. So to say, well, we should hold it over to the, after the next election, I just don't understand, I don't understand that. I think it's also, it could be the opposite manipulation that you're suggesting possibly is happening right now. I mean, we are having a forum that is not necessary, but it's a good idea because there's public input. But I don't see any purpose in delaying any longer. We're going to have a chance for people to have input, and we can decide at that point.
We've almost made the decision that, number one, April 9th, we're going to have the public forum. That's going to be a lot of input, pros and cons. It will help us make a decision whether or not we want to go with that, okay? And that particular evening, we can either take action to vote on it that night, or we can postpone it, depending on what the council wants to do. And also, dependent on what the people are saying at the forum. That may change our whole direction.
It may very likely not know, tell you why, because you are definitely going to have one, possibly two, possibly three. People sitting here who have an entirely different... You will have definitely one, possibly two, who will know that within a week, they are no longer responsible to the voting public.
I would be careful what you say there, because you're insinuating that I don't care anymore what the voting public is saying. That is really...
I'm going to cut off debate. We got a motion. Who's in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Could you restate it?
Yes, could you restate it?
Madam?
Move to have the April 9th public forum for the Riverwalk project with the wording to review the bids and possible action. Held.
Yeah, with possible action, okay. Everybody understand it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's carried. Let's go to new business. Consider changing the date for the first council meeting in April due to spring election setup.
Move to change to April 4th.
Second motion? You second it?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Here's another one that's going to take a little time. Consider authorizing the transfer of City of Hudson Community Development Block Grant Business Revolving Loan Fund to the Regional Business Fund, Incorporated, Resolution Number 8-07. Denny, give us the highlights.
I wish you had a good joke to share with you this night.
I wish you did, too.
Lighten the tone of the meeting a little bit.
It's okay, we're all ready.
You're good.
Consolidated revolving loan fund programs was initiated by the State Department of Commerce, with the intention of trying to get a lot of the revolving loan fund monies that are distributed out to many communities in the regional areas into one consolidated program. What's proposed is, we have two revolving loan fund programs. One is the Business Revolving Loan Program, the original program that was initiated by a couple of grants that were received by the City of Hudson. Those are federal dollars. We also have a second program called the St. Croix Business Park Fund. Those are state dollars and are not subject to federal regulations. The consolidated program is suggesting that the federal dollars go into a regional system where those monies are eligible to any community that is participatory in that regional system. Now, the, any loan that are applied for less than $150,000 would go to a county review committee, St. Croix County Review Committee. Anything larger than that would go to the regional system. And probably the majority of grant, or excuse me, loan requests would not be over $150,000. Our typical loans are less than that. The City of Hudson currently has about $500,000 in the regional loan, or in the, excuse me, the Business Revolving Loan Program, about $225,000 in the St. Croix Business Park. This was reviewed by the revolving loan fund committee. They did not take action on it. The reason I'm requesting that the consideration be denied is that the regional system will soon be organized, and if we want to have an opportunity to sit down with St. Croix County and be part of the discussion on how the county system's going to be organized, we need to approve this resolution tonight. If it's important enough for delay, then we just won't have that opportunity. I'm not going to argue for or against it. I do not see a negative side to this consideration. Do we lose some control? Yes, we do. Will we also have an opportunity for our businesses to apply to the regional system where programs of $150,000 or less, that would go to the county. And if they're over $150,000, then they would go to the regional system. Again, the number of applications we've had for over $250,000 loan, I can only remember one or two in our history. And I think I've been involved in this program about 15 years. So that's suggestive. I'd be more than pleased to answer any specific questions.
In the past, Denny, we generally relegated our loans to $100,000 or less, mostly, haven't we?
Well, most of them have come in. You know, one is our capitalization of our program. Our capitalization's been limited. We haven't had a loan that's gone out for, oh, probably over a year, so some of that capitalization's increased. You know, we were down probably less than $200,000 in one or both programs at one time. We've been able to recapitalize that. Now, we do have a much larger capitalization, at least in our business loan program, of about $500,000. But we'll have a fund that could be as large as $7 million that we could tap into also, if we go with the regional system. So, you know, we could have a couple of businesses that comes in very shortly, that would apply for $250,000, $200,000, $250,000. We wouldn't have the capitalization to fund those programs under our current program. Now, under the regional system, there'd be that potential. So we would have that. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen. I, just last week, had discussions with the Department of Commerce in regards to a business that's extremely interesting in the City of Hudson. They would probably be making a loan request of over $250,000, or at $250,000, in which hopefully the regional system would be available for the technological funds to fund an additional $250,000 out of that for a possible funding. Again, it's only discussion at this time. I'm giving you an example of a possible loan of $500,000 to that business, high-tech business, 30 jobs, you know, making very good revenue, very low impact on the community, probably a type of business you may not even know is in the City of Hudson, other than the names on the door. But 30 jobs. And so it does give us some flexibility. We will not transfer the revolving loan fund programs for St. for the St. Croix Business Park. Those are non-federal funds. The state of the city, Betty, I, Catherine will continue to administrate that with the assistance of the Regional Planning Commission. But the other programs, now, part of the benefit of going to the regional system, one of the things that they will be creating is a downtown facade historic preservation program, loans up to $30,000, no interest rate. Now, again, we could, you know, we could potentially create our own facade improvement program, but we may have one or two different ones. Or we could plan funds for a project larger than $30,000 for facade improvements, if we've got our own and could tap into 30 with the regional system.
Betty, you got any comments? This is the Chief Financial Officer.
Um, Denny's covered them all, and I, in so far, wouldn't say.
Okay.
This is somewhat a leap of faith. The Regional Planning Commission's done, conducted the administration for our program for several years. They've done a very good job.
Absolutely.
Really can't say anything negative now to say. Now, one of the questions is, what happens if the regional fund, something happens, they have to fold. The monies, they would go back prorate the monies that was given to them from the counties. It wouldn't come back to the city directly, but it'd come back to St. Croix County, to the Economic Development Corporation or some other entity that would administrate a county loan program for a county basis, which the city could tap into. So the monies just don't go away. The prorate of the sheriff would come back to St. Croix County. They will not come back to all the individual communities.
Move to suspend the rules, I think.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to adopt Resolution 8-07.
Second? Discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Let's go down to C. Consider repealing Section 235.3 I in the Hudson Municipal Code regarding odd-even parking ordinance number 4-07. This has been a problem since we first had it.
Now, we discussed this at a previous meeting, but I don't know if I considered first reading of this, of this ordinance.
No, because we didn't have an ordinance.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. So I'm going to move to suspend the rules again, because I think we can quickly...
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Move to adopt ordinance 4-07.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. We aren't having a closed session. I think the communications recommendations of the mayor have already been said this evening. I'll hold some for the open forums. Let's go down to communications and items for future agendas without discussion. Any alter person? City Attorney, City Administrator in New Zealand.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second? Whoa, wait a minute.
Who gets the rose pinned on him to do the public hearing for the annexation?
What?
Ooh.
What?
Do the public hearing for the annexation? You guys voted to have a public hearing for the annexation. Who's going to put the public hearing notice in the paper? Who's responsible for doing it? I just want to know, is me, or where it's, so it doesn't fall between the cracks and all of a sudden...
Madam, clerk will do that.
And I think she probably has a pretty tight deadline.
And Randy knows it's coming.
Randy knows it's coming, he'll help us. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Thank you for your gentleness this evening.
It's all in good fun.
I know. I didn't know we were having fun.